A call to order our city council meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sylvia, roll call.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Harris?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson?
Here.
Counselor King?
Here.
Counselor Kuiper?
Here.
Counselor Brousse?
Here.
Thank you. And Counselor Robinson is absent.
Thank you. So we have two counselors that are on the phone, so it does appear a little strange here, but Counselor, President Harris and Counselor Kuiper are, I'm sorry, Counselor Brousse are both on the phone with us. Tonight, before I continue on, I wanted to take a moment. We have lost one of our own. Sergeant Jason Gooding was shot and killed in the line of duty. He was a Sherwood resident and he was a seaside police officer. And so I, in respect to him and his family and their great loss, would like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda. Approval of January 30th, 2016, city council meeting minutes. Approval of February 2nd, 2016, city council meeting minutes. Resolution 2016-004, appointing John Lyle to the Cultural Arts Commission. Resolution 2016-005, appointing
Eileen?
Eileen, thank you so much. Thompson to the Cultural Arts Commission. Resolution 2016-006, completing the annual performance evaluation of the city recorder for the city of Sherwood. Resolution 2016-007, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract for the Columbia Street Regional Stormwater Facility Pipe Mitigation Project. Resolution 2016-008, appointing the budget officer for fiscal year 2016, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
I'll move consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Presentation. We have a recognition of an Eagle Scout tonight. I actually have two. Is Bradley Bergstrom here tonight? I will mail you your recognition. Congratulations. Andrew Chikowski? Okay, Chikowski?
Chikowski.
Also not here. Darn the luck. All right, well, congratulations. I will also mail you your certificate. Citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comment sheets tonight? Kurt Christensen? Push down on the button until it turns green.
There you go.
Thank you.
Kurt Christensen, South, 2252 Southwest Fair Oaks Court, Sherwood. At the last council meeting for citizens' comment, I reminded counselors that we have a very dangerous development going on in Salem right now, and it's a short legislative session. Senate Bill 1537, effectively, if adopted, if referred out of the current committee that's in, will completely abolish voters' ability in communities like Sherwood to vote on any annexation proposal. Regardless of how people feel about an annexation proposal, regardless of where it's coming from, I think it has served communities like Sherwood well to have that balancing influence by residents and voters to vote on it. And I would really encourage counsel, either the strongest message to Salem would be a resolution. If that can't happen, then individual counselors to email Senator Rosenbaum down there that you're concerned about that. Home Builders Association have been trying for years to get this type of legislation passed, and eventually, if we give up, what will happen is that an annexation proposal will just be brought up by anybody, and the rest of us will end up paying the bills for it. So I think that it's extremely important that we continue to respect the charter that says that any annexation has to go to the voters. And if Senate Bill 1537 is passed, that'll be a moot question. Our charter will have been, yeah, broken. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Garland?
Hello, everybody. Sean Garland, 14711, Southwest Brook Court here in Sherwood. I come here today to talk about a great community event coming up on Saturday, February 20th. It is the Sherwood Foundation for the Arts' third annual Jigsaw Puzzle Competition. It's going to be held at the police station in the community room. My lovely wife, Madeline Garland, kind of kicked off the idea three years ago, and Counselor Henderson, when she heard of the idea, said this would be a great community event. So this is our third year running. Counselor Kuiper was there last year and put in a great showing. There are three different events. It starts at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday morning. It's individual teams, I'm sorry, individuals, ages 14 to adult. They'll be doing a 300-piece puzzle, about a two-hour window on that. 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. will be a team of two, and that's ages 14 and adults again. That's a 500-piece puzzle. And then the big, the big event, the one that's always really competitive, is the Family and Friends Team of Four. That starts at 2:00 p.m., and that actually goes down to ages eight to adults. So you can, you know, if you've got some kids, we've had plenty of kids that have competed in that in the past. It's also a 500-piece puzzle. The competitors all get to keep the puzzles that they complete, so everybody goes home a winner. But we do have tons of great prizes that are being donated by our local community here. I mean, more than I can name, but, I mean, I think actually the SFA is donating some tickets for the summer musical yet to be named. But yes, so, more information, sherwoodarts.org for more info or to sign up. Again, the event is Saturday, February 20th, this coming Saturday. Sign up because we are quickly running out of spaces. So, thank you much.
Thank you. Sounds like fun. Test Keys.
Test Keys, Pine Street, Sherwood, Oregon. I just wanted to talk a little bit about our auction, the YMCA auction that was held this last Saturday. And rather than try to reiterate all the things I'm going to say, I'm just going to read the article I wrote for the Gazette, so you will know a little bit about what happened. Am I okay? Usually I'm okay. As welcome aboard ranking out of the Sherwood YMCA Love Boat, also known as the Sherwood Center for the Arts, set sail in Full Regalia on February 13th, 2016, travelers were warmly welcomed by Captain Stubing, also known as Police Captain Mark Daniel, and Cruise Director Julie McCoy, also known as YMCA Executive Director Renee Brousse. City Council member Jennifer Kuiper, complete with glitter sparkles and a sweeping full-length black boa, opened the evening with her never-before-heard rendition of the Love Boat theme song. Tables piled with silent auction items had buyers bidding up to the last closing seconds. Dinner made and served by Rachel on the hot stove, with dessert by Hungry Hero and Love Boat-themed cookies by Sweet Story Followed. But the night was far from over. As the last crumbs of dessert disappeared, Kevin Bates, owner of Symposium, and emcee for the night, teamed up with Patrick Siver, our auctioneer from GE Events, and got our fitty-fitty, now-too-fitty-do-I-hear-sixty-fitty rest of the night rolling. Halfway through the auction, pals were raised, and money was pledged in the heartfelt Sherwood spirit of appreciation for all the Y does in our community. Dancing topped off the night with music played by Captain Stubing in DJ Style as only he can do it. Special thanks to Kevin Bates, Renee Brousse, Gail Cuttsforth, Captain Mark Daniel, Melody Danner, Cheryl Hess, Martin Rakers, Rachel Shoney, Patrick Siver, Christie Thompson, and all the volunteers and our sponsors. And our sponsors, Exercise Equipment Northwest, the Langer family, Todd and Leslie McCabe of McCabe Real Estate Group, and Oregon On-Site Drug Testing, who made this such a rewarding event. All of the money raised goes to our YMCA for camp scholarships, membership financial aid, and the many, many Y programs that help move Sherwood positively forward. We invite you to join with the Y in supporting our local, our goal of strengthening our community through youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility.
Thank you. All right, we'll open up the public hearing. Resolution 2016-009, accepting the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan as a foundational tool on which to base future urban growth, boundary expansion discussions, and future refinement plans. Brad Kilby.
And Mayor and Counsel, before Brad starts, I have to read the public hearing statement.
Thank you.
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing to hear testimony on ordinance ... Resolution, excuse me. Resolution 2016-009, accepting the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan as a foundational tool on which to base future urban growth, boundary expansion, discussion, and future refinement plans. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony on the above said item. The order of business the council will follow is to hear a staff report, receive any correspondence, receive public testimony, and then additional staff comments. Questions from the council will follow. The hearing will then be closed, and no further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address, or the record as this hearing will be recorded, and limit your testimony to four minutes.
Thank you, Sylvia. Brad?
Good evening, counselors. Thank you. So, what you may or may not know is that this is a culmination of a 16-month process tonight, so we're really excited. As you can tell, they're flying their hands everywhere.
So excited, our hands are moving.
So, what is Sherwood West? Well, Sherwood West is the area in Blueup here. It's 1,291 acres, west of Elworth Road, southeast of Shoal Sherwood Road, west of Roy Rogers Road, and north of 99W and Chapman Road. The furthest east boundary is Eastview Parkway, and that's off of Edie and south of Edie. I guess what is the Sherwood West? It's a culmination of a very public and transparent process where a very dedicated group of citizens came together to begin a serious conversation about the future of Sherwood. It's a plan built on trust and understanding that there's still a lot of work to do, but in the words of Commissioner Alan Pearson, "It's a plan that's not even etched in Silly Putty yet, but rather the first step in thinking about our future and talking about it as a community." Fundamentally, for you, it's a tool for future discussions related to growth and expansion in Sherwood, into this area. You're not adopting the plan tonight because it's purposely been left fluid with many opportunities and decisions to be made ahead. The plan includes an executive summary, an outline of the process that we went through, a discussion of the history and growth of Sherwood, a discussion of how the baseline for the project was achieved, the concept plan itself, how it was developed, necessary improvements to support urban levels of growth, a phasing and funding strategy that plans to inform you on the cost of improvements, next steps and recommendations. Obviously, that next step for us, in my mind, is our comprehensive plan update. And then the appendices includes all of the technical documentation of the information that we collected along the way. Why are we doing this now? Well, I guess because, in the words of Benjamin Franklin, "If you fail to plan, then you can plan to fail." And every community that's not growing is going to die, just the way it works. And there's a lot of sentiment about Sherwood being a great community, and we heard that throughout the process. We were awarded a CET grant for the Preliminary Concept Plan, and it provided us an opportunity to seize our own destiny. We're not sitting out here waiting for Metro to impose their own plan requirements on us. We're taking the first step and talking to our citizens. As part of this project, we funded a housing needs analysis, which includes a bunch of raw data that informs us of why we need to think about growth now. And just to highlight, as it stands today, with Brookman included, if it were to be annexed today, we have a four-to-10-year land supply. That's based on growth projections in anywhere from 3% to 8% from 1990 up until today. In 1991, the last time our comprehensive plan was updated, we had between 3,500 and 4,000 people. And today, we're pushing 20,000 people. And today, I would say that over 90% of the people that are in Sherwood today were not here when that comprehensive plan was last passed or updated. So, without carefully planning for growth, the city will begin to see more infill projects, requests to rezones, and transformations of its neighborhoods. And I brought the consultants along with us. We've got a group of people from our Community Advisory Committee that'll be here tonight that will speak. And as you, as you may or may not remember, when we appointed this Community Advisory Committee, we had over 40 applicants that wanted to be on that committee. And so initially, I was thinking we were going to be lucky to get 10. And so we had 40, and we appointed 19. So we had a 19-member Community Advisory Committee. We had a Technical Advisory Committee made up of the various departments throughout the city, Clean Water Services, Washington County Transportation and Engineering, Metro, and let's see, who else did we, oh, the School District and the Fire District. So, with that, I'm going to turn this over to you. One more thing. I'm sorry, I want to back up a little bit. I just want to tell you what this map is all about. So, the areas that are taupe-colored are the urban growth boundary, urban reserves. So these are areas that Metro would consider for urban expansion over the next 50-year time horizon. As you know, they chose not to expand the UGB in this last go-around. That puts us into a cycle where we wouldn't be. And when I start talking about our next steps, I'll come back to that. But the areas outside of this, the light shades of green, are rural reserves, and those are the areas that are not expected to be grown into over the next 50 years. So whenever we talk about an expansion of the urban growth boundary, we're talking about an expansion of the metro urban growth boundary. Sherwood is one of those communities that has been talked about in the recent past, given that we're not able to annex Brookman, and given that we have a high demand for land. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Kirsten Green from Cogan Owens Green, and Anna Yeas from Cogan Owens Green, to talk a little bit about the public involvement, vision statement, and the goals and criteria that we developed through this process.
Thank you, mayors and mayor and counselor. Thanks for having us. My name is Kirsten Green, Managing Principal of Cogan Owens Green, and Anna Yeas Matei is Associate Planner with us and the Deputy Project Manager for our consulting team. The plan was built on several really important attributes, looking at Sherwood's incredible livable community character and the values around livability. So you'll see, and Brad's going to come back up and review the plan document, some of the principles. Martin Galaster Van Loon from Sarah Architects is out of town tonight. He is the lead urban designer on the project, and Brad will be going over his portion. But the major plan attributes include this principle of a 10-minute neighborhood, which you have in your existing Sherwood, the half-mile radius, being able to walk to amenities such as parks and trails, and some retail. Resource protection near and dear to Sherwood residents' hearts, obviously. Schools and neighborhood-serving retail, as I mentioned. So Brad touched on this slide, but this, you know, again, speaks to Sherwood taking control of its destiny. These, this, Julie often speaks also about how this concept plan is different from ones you've seen, for example, with Brookman, and it being a preliminary concept plan. Metro's changed its rules and regulations for this urban rural reserves, 50-year land supply. So this is one of the first areas planned in the region, actually, under that new rubric of a preliminary concept plan. So with that, Anna Yeas, please.
Before we go into the document itself, I'm just going to briefly touch on some of the public involvement that happened for this process, which was actually quite robust. So our CAC was actually very instrumental in helping develop and help execute our public involvement plan. So with their help, we were able to identify and define these following objectives to help guide, you know, guide this work and guide this project. So in evaluating our engagement efforts with the community, we were actually able to achieve all of these objectives, if not exceed some of them. So the first one, consistency of messages and understanding of the benefits of concept planning. It was very early on that we developed these key messages, focusing on issues of housing, on growth, available land, and the benefits of planning. The second, frequency and effectiveness of community engagement opportunities. We had open CAC and TAC meetings. We had many community workshops, community events, open houses, that touched nearly 300 people. And reviewing the promo video that was out at the very beginning of this process, we have over, I think, 1,000 views on that video, so it's been circulated widely. And then increasing participation over time. Our first community workshop, we had about 40 people in attendance, and then the last open house, over 80 people showed up, so there was a lot of, a lot of participation there. Piloting new techniques. We were able to harness social media here. We were able to launch Facebook. We also used Mind Mixer, which is a community engagement platform. And then finally, community concerns were identified and addressed. This, I think, is the foundation of this plan. It was a highly, highly iterative process in that it went through over, or through three rounds of revisions, based on a lot of the comments that we got back from people at community workshops, open houses, online surveys, et cetera. So those were the objectives. And then here you just have a very brief list of some of the community engagement events that were, that we took part in. So the effort to get in the community was really tremendous. In addition, city staff, namely Connie Randall and Brad Kilby, they were really instrumental in getting out to a lot of the property owners in Sherwood West, meeting with them individually. So, and in addition to all of the above, such as being available to give information about the project and speak to people at Music on the Green, Movies in the Park, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. So I'm going to turn it over to Kirsten, who will go over the vision and guiding and evaluation criteria.
Thanks. So keeping mindful of time here, you've probably seen the vision statement embedded in the document, but I just wanted to touch on a few of the core concepts there. The emphasis on Sherwood's small-town character, the integration of the plan with existing Sherwood, and extending a continued pattern of the community's most valuable neighborhood, most valued neighborhoods. The well-designed is a key attribute. We know we're not doing design standards at this point, but there's a high expectation that the neighborhoods would be aesthetic and attractive, as you have in so many of your neighborhoods today. The protected natural areas, and then the fact that development, if it occurs, should be an overall benefit to the overall fiscal health of all the residents of Sherwood. So mindful that this is a piece of the whole, not a separate island in the landscape, but really continuing the pattern in a way that would only improve quality of life. Challenging to do, but that's our, that's the vision, that's the aspiration. In terms of the goals, the CAC helped us develop these as well, and the evaluation criteria. So just to jump to the chase, we feel that we've met, and Anna Yeas mentioned, these iterations, all the evaluation criteria, and that the items in bold are, the items in bold are high, that exceeded the, that are better than good. So exceeded the evaluation criteria well. So growth is well-planned. Design includes complete community attributes, incorporating nature, small amounts of neighborhood retail, so folks have the option not to walk to every need, provides amenities that can't be located in existing Sherwood, so you see some of those attributes in the plan. The development respects and recognizes the Sherwood pattern that Martin studied in depth, based on Sherwood's heritage and small-town feel, and there's actually geographic and physical attributes that you can pattern from your existing neighborhoods into Sherwood West. The concepts promote health, obviously, a high value well-recognized in Sherwood, with walking and bicycling access, and in the future, access to increased transportation and choice that would include transit. Development that protects and provides access to nature. You'll see emphasis on the creeks that are in Sherwood West, extending up Cedar Creek and others from existing Sherwood, and walking trails along the heritage resources that you have. Implementation is pragmatic, and Laura Lygentinan from Eco Northwest is, will follow Brad a little bit later in the presentation to talk about the balance of funding infrastructure and some of the tools you might consider if and when the plan is adopted, and if and when the area is brought into Metro's UGB. So with that, Brad, if you don't mind coming back up and talking just a little bit about the urban growth pattern and where we've been and where we're going.
Gladly. So, let's, I'm just going to get into the plan. So Sherwood has grown from the nine-block area there, and that's the old town, the red blocks of the old town, into this area, and each one of these represents a point in time that Sherwood expanded. There are a few things that would be interesting for you to note, is that we expanded along the rail line, and that Cedar Creek has always been a very important characteristic of our community. What we found is that Sherwood makes up a, is made up of a series of small, compact neighborhoods. And all of our neighborhoods fit within an area that is about one-mile radius, so it's a very compact community. In fact, I read something in the Oregonian that said that we're one of the denser communities in Metro, so I think Metro would be surprised to know that. We have about 7.9 dwelling units per acre on average. If we include Sherwood West, we could still capture those neighborhood, that's the quarter-mile, 10-minute walking, walkable area that Kirsten alluded to a little while ago, and it grows just to about 1.5-mile radius. Keep in mind, this is over a 50-year time period. Some of this area might come in, all of it might come in, or none of it might come in. We might, there are other areas that Metro might consider for coming in. So, we are an island in the landscape. That was something that we found through our discussions with the people, and actually having Martin look at the physical attributes. So we are surrounded by the Tuallaton River floodplain on the north, which pretty much limits the type of development that you're going to see up there. So you'll see in Tiger, where they have river terrace developing out now, you'll get to the floodplain, and you can't develop much denser housing below that. We have the Shehalim Mountains to our west, Parent Mountain to our south and east, and then the Tonkin Scablands to our south and east as well. So the Sherwood West area is nestled within the foothills of the Shehalim Mountains, and Martin explained this, it was really great. When you're driving up Highway 99, when you leave Tiger, there's a stretch of open space before you get into Sherwood, so it's unique in that way. When you leave Newburgh, you have to cross over the Shehalim Mountains, and we're kind of, you're kind of out in an area, and then you come into Sherwood, so we're kind of unique in that way. And coming from the north, you have to cross, coming from Roy Rogers, you come across that floodplain, and again, we're separated from the communities to the north of us. And then to the south of this is the Tonkin Scablands. Although we do touch Tuallaton on the Tuallaton Sherwood roadway, I mean, it's a very skinny area that we would be touching. With the Tonkin Employment Area, we would see more of that coming together, but the densities of development that we're talking about there aren't something that would negatively affect, I guess, the livability of Sherwood. In fact, it would probably improve the livability of Sherwood because it provides jobs for people in Sherwood, and for companies that want to locate to Sherwood, there have to be housing options and choices. And right now, we would be limited. So, again, the plan attributes, just a quick reminder, these are the things that we derived as some of the most important things that people wanted us to consider. We asked them, when we went out, Connie and I went out and talked to 82 of the 124 homeowners. They either came in here, or we went to their homes, and we sat down, and we had a discussion with them. And what they told us was, "Sherwood is special. It's a small-town feel," and we had to ask, "What makes it small-town?" And some of the things that they told us, primarily, what they thought made the schools great, what, I mean, the city great was the schools, the amount of open space that's in and around Sherwood, and the way that it's protected, and the neighborhoods. So capitalizing on that, Martin came up with three alternative plans.
You would say the community came up with.
What did I say?
Martin with.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, I mean, well, yeah.
We did it together.
So we started with three very different plan alternatives and narrowed it down to one plan with two transportation alternatives that I'll get into in a second. But if you look at these three plans, draft plan alternatively was primarily a residential plan with one school located up the north, and some regional ballfields or playfields. If you look up in the area that's, if you continued up Edie Road, it says a nature park. We've talked to that family. The family's been around a long. We've talked to that family, the family's been around a long time, and they have a lot, that area that's primarily in the darker green is already in conservation, and they would like to see that as a nature park for their parents. So keeping with that, we moved to the second alternative, has a lot more open space set aside, and it includes more residential and a few more retail components. And the school's been moved up to the corner of Roy Rogers Road in Shoal Sherwood, which we knew going into it that that would not be a good idea, given the amount of traffic at that location. But we have to look at extremes. And then the third alternative was a heavily commercial component, which would have relied on a single school and a lot of retail, commercial-type uses. So we came up with a plan, actually, after several revisions of the plan, we came up with this plan. And this is one single plan, but there's two options here for transportation. You can see that one of the options is a realignment of Elworth Road, where it goes curve-linear, crosses over the creek at two locations, and then proceeds north. The idea behind that is that rather than bridging over in the existing alignment, that you could save costs on mitigation and those types of things, keep that road open while constructing this, and then cut down on the type of pass-through traffic that would go through. Preferred option two would keep the alignment of Elworth in its current location, and would just be a, a straight line. Going into the plan a little more in detail, so we have the north neighborhood, which includes a school. Getting off, getting off-topic here. So it has a school that's in the center of the primary neighborhood, maybe surrounded by parks, residential, and then would allow for regional ballfields up on the corner of Shoal Sherwood and Roy Rogers. An interesting note in that intersection is there's some major BPA power lines that go through there. So the, the uses that would be allowed in there normally are going to be limited, and you probably don't want to put housing under that type of situation. And even commercial could be an alternative, but it's a, it wasn't something that was looked at or considered seriously. People didn't like it when we first had the heavy one in, heavy commercial alternative. So here we have, the, the focus is on the west neighborhood. This shows the realignment, but it's primarily residential, and it calls for another school site. It does have some small retail components, but those are, again, very small retail components that are targeted towards neighborhood retail. Of note throughout the plan, you'll see is a second, I guess, arterial or boulevard, we like to think of it as boulevard, that comes up from the north and parallels Elworth Road, and would be treated somewhat similar to what you would see Sunset Boulevard south of Highway 99, with the tree-lined streets, and median was the idea behind that. The far west is the area that's east, I mean, I'm sorry, west of Chicken Creek. And of note there, that's the nature park, and then you have primarily neighborhood and Hillside Residential, which you'll see throughout the plan. Hillside Residential simply means that there are going to be some slope limitations to developing out there, so you're going to have lower-density homes. So as we talk about phasing, it'll be important to note that you don't get as much bang for your buck when you start developing residential over there and having to provide services to that area. So those are the areas that are less likely to be developed, are the low-hanging fruit.
Can I make a note on that one? Just one note, if I may, the, when Martin does his longer presentation on the physical attributes that frame existing Sherwood, and then the, the, the design types and neighborhoods nestled in here, jumping across Chicken Creek was just one of the, one of the major moves that we didn't consider the first priority. So that's why you see a lower intensity of development as well in that area.
And then this would be option two, where you have the current alignment of Elworth and Edie. And the same thing, you have Hillside Residential on the east side, and the nature park, which is, is in and of itself a very important attribute for that area, and would be great for the community. And then we drop below, south of Kruger Road, to the southwest portion, and that includes an area, if you look to the right, or I mean, I guess it would be to your right as well, that includes the Brookman Concept Plan area that does call for some type of employment and industrial uses on that side. On our side, there was a note that, hey, you know, we'd like to take advantage of some of the agri-business that occurs in this area. We have a guy up there that commercially grows hot peppers, chili peppers, and hybrid peppers. We have a couple wineries up there, we have a bunch of tree farms, and we have a llama, I guess rancher, for lack of a better word, but we have people that raise llamas. So it would be an idea that this would be type of our gateway to wine country and to the agri-business, and we'd be looking at things that would support agri-tourism within that area. Is that your plan?
Option one and option two.
Option one is again the realignment, and option two. And we heard this throughout, especially in the past few things. This is not a preference. There's no preference of option one over option two. Basically, we're saying that they both need to be studied in the future as we consider what goes on out there. So with that, I'm going to let Laura Lyjentinen step up here from Eco Northwest and talk a bit, a little bit about our phasing and funding, and then I'll go into next steps.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Hello, councilors. Thank you for spending some time with us this evening. As Brad said, my name is Laura Lyjentinen, and my firm, Eco Northwest, had the task of helping to do some of the preliminary thinking about how you implement this plan. And I will emphasize that it is preliminary because we don't know yet exactly when or if this area might be brought into the urban growth boundary. So most of the purpose of the analysis was to provide a foundation and some, a little bit of thinking ahead about implementation-related issues, so that if and when this moves forward, you have a starting place for those conversations. We considered issues with costing side and funding sources for transportation, storm, sanitary water, parks, and schools, and also had some conversations around issues related to public safety and other types of public services. So all of that was in the mix. And because we have two options for the plan, there are also two options for how you might go about phasing in the infrastructure. It's important to note that the city would not construct all of the infrastructure necessary to support these areas in one go. It would need to be phased over time, and the phasing needs to be responsive to the existing infrastructure and how the development can connect into that in the most cost-efficient way. So we worked very closely with your city engineer. In fact, all of the cost numbers that you see represented here are based on his analysis to think about what kinds of infrastructure would be needed, and how you would go about logically phasing it in. In both options, you'll see generally A and B being in the same location. And the reason that those are the areas that go first is that there is a trunk line that exists that will run through the Brookman area that can be extended into area A and B in a way that is, it certainly has some costs associated with it, and you see that there. But it turns out that the costs for that trunk line are actually lower than the realignment or reconstruction of Edie Elworth. And those pieces of infrastructure are critical to being able to develop in, in A, B, or C. So when you look at the cost differential between the two, and recognize that the sewer trunk line and transportation and all the costs for A and B are lower than C, we thought that might be an area that would go first. It's very important, though, to note that we didn't, we didn't number these one, two, three, four, five on purpose, because there are any number of variables that might cause the city to make different decisions about phasing these areas. For example, there's a significant school site in C. And if the city has need for that site, it may make sense to develop that area first. So really, you should think about these as sort of chunking, as opposed to sequencing. But if you're looking at it purely from a cost perspective, and sort of what's most cost-effective, you would go in the order A, B, and then C. The cost is included there. The difference between the two is related entirely to the approach to either realigning or reconstructing Edie and Elworth. And the fill to do the straight T-intersection in option two is more expensive, based on the preliminary cost estimates, than the realignment that's shown in option one. So that's what is causing the differences that you see for area C costs. And, and to get in front of this question, and, and tell you what all is included in those cost estimates, it includes site prep, it includes the cost of the construction of the roads themselves, curb and gutter, storm, sanitary, and water, and it includes ride-away, there's a contingency built in, and it also includes all of the traffic elements. So when your city engineer made these order-of-magnitude cost estimates, he did think about all of those, all of those variables. So that's the phasing. That's okay, I got it. So then to start to think a little bit ahead to how you might go about funding this work. The first thing to note is that there are existing funding tools in place that the city would want to maximize to help to fund infrastructure here. And some of them are county-controlled, like, for example, the Transportation and Development Tax, the TDT, or the MSTIP. Those are both Washington County funding sources, but some are city-controlled sources, like the systems development charges that are already in place for certain elements of infrastructure. So the first step in funding infrastructure would be to make sure that you're maximizing all of those existing sources. From there, if there is a gap, and again, our, our cost estimates are order of magnitude, and we don't know for sure that there will be a gap, but if there is, we completed an initial evaluation of potential new funding tools that could be used to help to fill that gap. The details of this are included in the plan and in the appendices associated with it. What's showing on the slide here is an overview summary of that evaluation. To give you some sense of how we approached it, there was a, a much longer list of tools that were included. We've, we have not shown them all on this slide. And we thought about them in terms of the criteria that you see in the rows on the slide. Capacity, how much revenue might this tool be able to generate? An important piece is timing. Does the tool generate money upfront to be able to fund infrastructure? Or is it money that is derived from the actual development itself occurring, which means that you get into a chicken-and-an-egg situation where the money's not available when you need it upfront? So that's the timing piece. Administrative ease, important to think about the cost of administering the program that generates the funding. In some cases, those can be prohibitive. Stability and predictability, in particular, for any funding source that might require borrowing, your underwriters will want to make sure that the revenue that comes in associated with the funding tool is very stable and predictable, and will be available when it's needed. Flexibility, many tools are specifically available only for a particular type of infrastructure. So we were looking for those tools that could be broadly used across many different segments of the infrastructure needs. Fairness, which we operationalized in this evaluation as being those who pay are those who benefit. So that, that's an important one to think about. Legality, obviously, critical, has to be legal. And then political acceptability, is it, is it a tool that could be used? The judgment calls that we show here in the check, the, you know, check mark being it's, it's okay, plus being it's good, bad, as with the negative, those, those are judgment calls, and could be, and should be reevaluated if and when the area is brought in, and you're actually evaluating and making decisions about how to fund. But as a starting point, we went through this laundry list of tools and eliminated those that scored poorly, or that had any kind of a fatal flaw, to get to this list that you see here. And the ones that are highlighted in green on your slide, and blue if you're looking in your packet, are those that are preferred tools that seem to have the capacity to generate a fairly significant amount of revenue, and score well on the remainder of the criteria as well. I, I will just quickly talk through what those preferred tools are for those who are not familiar with them, and I am going to focus just on the preferred tools. So citywide tools mean, those are, those are tools, funding tools, that are applied to property or residents of the entire city to fund development in Sherwood West. And the, the one that comes to the top there is a government obligation, or GEO bond, which is levied against property taxes. It does require a vote of the citizens, so obviously, this is not something that would be put into place lightly. But, but we really like the GEO bond because once it's in place, it is so flexible and so stable, and it has the capacity to generate a fairly significant amount of revenue, and could cover some pretty significant chunks of infrastructure that are necessary to really catalyze and support development in Sherwood West area. So that one would definitely need more conversation moving into a possible development in the area, but it has, from a, purely from a funding perspective, it has all of the properties that would make it a beneficial tool to use. And just to supersede the question around political acceptability, it is, this is a tool that is broadly used for infrastructure funding in communities across Oregon, despite the fact that a vote is required. It is, it has been successfully used, like Oswego passed a GEO bond just recently to fund improvements to Boones Ferry Road. And there are any number of other examples that could be used there. Development-derived tools are those funding sources, funding tools that come from new development as it happens. So they're, they're levied on new development. And in most of these tools, you end up in a situation where you, you need the money upfront to pay for the infrastructure, but it, the money comes from the development itself, so it can create a chicken-and-egg problem. So however, there are a few here that would work really well. One is a supplemental SDC, which is an additional systems development charge on top of what you've already got in place specifically for Sherwood West. And the other is a local improvement district, which would be levied against the properties within Sherwood West, if the property owners agreed to it. Last but not least is a utility fee. That one is citywide, and it is a fee that is just tacked on to a utility bill to help to fund infrastructure. So again, I'm happy to go through, if you have questions, some of the details of that, but as a quick flyover, those are the kinds of sources that, in a preliminary way, seem to make sense to fund a gap, if there is a gap, when it gets time to look specifically at development in Sherwood West. It's, I'm, I'm really pleased to see the amount of focus in this plan on implementation. It's really critical to be thinking ahead to how this will actually move forward, and pleased to be able to help to support those conversations just by getting information out there. At this point, that's primarily what this is, is information out so that you're aware of it and can think about it when the time comes. So I think that's it for me.
Yeah, thanks, Laura Ly. Any questions for Laura Ly?
Or anyone else.
Well, right. Well, I've got more to go, but since you're here. No, no, I know. I just wanted, this is a big chunk for me, and so I just thought that you guys might, if there were questions. I mean, one of the things that came out of this process is we knew that we're going to require significant infrastructure improvements for any one of those phases, and it's talking about bringing rural roads up to urban standards. So crossing creeks and other natural habitat areas, addressing topographic challenges for all of our utilities, meeting an identified need to preserve resource lands and sensitive habitats, as well as providing recreational and trail-type opportunities, and to ensure that future district, school district needs were adequately planned for.
I do have a question about the Edie Elworth cross-section. Yes. So in the, in option two, it looks like that would generally just stay the same, maybe widened. And then in option one, there's some roundabouts up in that area. I can't tell where I'm at there, but I'm assuming that option would be more expensive just because you're looking at fills, crossing a wetland in there?
So according to Bob, and that's just it, this, these were based on order of magnitude.
Okay.
You're crossing two smaller creek sections, so you wouldn't have the cost that you would with a big, large bridge that would have to be elevated.
Yep.
So he's, his mind, in his mind at that, at the time that he was putting this together, was the option that kept it straight would be more expensive than the option that had the curve-linear way. And quite frankly, we don't get to the point in this plan that speaks to design. So I mean, those are just based on, you know what they do when, when engineers put cost estimates together, is they look at projects that they've done in the past. They look at, ODOT manages and keeps a list of costs of projects that they do, and so engineers can look at that, and look at, you know, the cost of certain things that they have to go off of, and they can then estimate what they think the cost will be based on the improvement. So this has not been surveyed, there's not been any type of analysis or anything beyond that, but we know that it's crossing a big creek.
I'll just keep my second question really general then. So would Metro bring in this entire area in at once? Or would it be brought into, in sections, and that, would that have an effect on A, B, C, D?
Well, it's, that's a, that's a good question. I would say that we set it up specifically so that you didn't have to think in the context of, I have to bring in A before B, or I have to bring, we, you could bring in parts of A and parts of C that go around the city. I mean, those, these are just... I mean, those, these are just, there are some infrastructure investments that need to be made for each one of those areas, and it was easier for us to categorize. So if all of C and D came in, then you would have to make a decision on the realignment of Elbert and Edie. If a portion of C came in, you may not have to make that cost, that estimate. We'd have to do further study and refinement to understand what you would need to accommodate the type of development that you would project out in that area. So personally, I'm of the mindset that E and F are probably the fruit at the top of the tree, that we know from our conversations that there's not a lot of owner sentiment out in that area to come in. They want it to be in the last phases of development. We know that it would be more costly to take infrastructure up to there to serve lower densities of properties. So they clearly wouldn't recover the cost. So if you think of a, a house on one acre doesn't cover the cost of providing services to it as opposed to how, you know, five houses on an acre. They provide more towards the cost of providing services than that house on a one acre, on a single acre.
And I'm going to just chime in, and one of the, one of the big things that I'm getting out of this project is when Metro is considering an urban growth boundary expansion, this information allows us to have something to say. You know, know, know what we want, know what our priorities are, know what our community wants. And so it's feasible that they could say, we need all this land and it's all going to come in, but we now have something to say. Well, that's great, Metro, but E and F isn't going to happen for a long time because of the infrastructure cost. So it just helps us have that conversation.
Stole my thunder.
That's all I was going to say, too.
That makes sense. That makes absolute sense.
So in thinking in, in next steps and how this all progresses, speaking of Metro, basically, in my mind, the city now has a tool to begin the discussion about where and why we expand, based on community preference and understanding of our needs, our infrastructure needs, preliminary costs, and most important, most important to me, the owner sentiment that we heard out in that area. Metro will make a decision to expand UGB. We're kind of out of their cycle. Normally, they would do it on a six-year cycle. Because they chose not to expand the UGB this last time, there's still, I think some of the urban reserves out in Clackamas County and Multnomah County are still in court. So they want to revisit the urban growth boundary in three years as opposed to the six-year cycle. So that, you know, that we have the timeframes up above, they make the decision to expand, it still takes typically a year. Then we have to go back out there and have a serious, a more serious discussion with those properties that are brought into the urban growth boundary, about what they want to see, about what the community wants at that time. You know, our needs today might be different than our needs and ones tomorrow. So we'll go through a refinement plan process, and that's where we'll start assigning densities and zoning and start talking about what infrastructure investments the community is willing to make. And the supplemental SDC, I wanted to talk to that a little bit because you might have heard discussions about the Bethany area when it was coming in. So Washington County has imposed a supplemental SDC for growth in certain areas where they think that the costs are higher. So if you're developing in unincorporated Washington County, in an area where services are already near, you're not paying as much in SDCs as you would be in the Bethany area. They have a supplemental SDC applied. Then we'd have to go through annexation. We know how that goes in Sherwood as of the last couple of years. Just, I always, I, I put this into a frame of reference for people that I were speaking to individually on their properties. They were like, when is this going to happen? Well, in my mind, we had the urban growth boundary expanded for Brookman in 2002. Here we are 16 years later, or 14 years later, and we, we haven't brought that area in. That's an area that met, or that's a point that Metro might consider in having discussions with the city. There was discussion throughout the process of whether or not we could swap the Brookman area for Sherwood West. We don't know, and nobody's had that discussion with Metro, but that's something that you can choose to do. So once the area is annexed, then people can, once we have the refinement plan and it's annexed, then people can start applying for land use approvals to start construction. And then you have the construction and ultimately occupancy of that area. I have been telling people, and I'm fairly confident that it's true, that you wouldn't see any new homes constructed out here under a Sherwood service, serviceability for at least a minimum of 10 years. So we're still quite a ways out. And finally, I will just leave you with the thought that it was a very, very open and transparent process, and we have promised people along the way that all we're doing is collecting data. We're not making any policy decisions at this level. We are just preparing a tool for you to use and for the community and future councils to use as they go out and talk to Metro about expanding and the citizens about growth. So with that, I will open it up for any questions that you might have. And I'm, I'm sorry, one more thing. I just wanted to thank the CAC members. There are some of the members here, they might speak, or they might not speak, but they put in a lot of time. I'd ask them to stand up if they are here, just to be recognized.
Stand up, CAC members.
A lot of these, a lot of these folks have been out there for a long time. They've lived in that area. We've got a lot of history. I learned a lot about that area. It's a really neat area, a lot of neat people. I would like to thank our consultants for all their hard work. Cocon Owens Green as the managing principal, Eco Northwest, Sarah Architects, OTAC, Pacific Habitat Services, DKS, and of course, Softbox Films for putting together the film at the beginning of the process. And the staff that were particularly key in putting this plan together were Connie Randall, who's now gone to Wilsonville, Bob Galati, and Kirsten Allen, just really amazing people. They stayed on top of the social media, kept the website up to date, constantly responded to people's inquiries about the process. We kept a board up top that kind of let people know what was going on all the time. And then people that are directly related to your function, Councilor Robinson sat in on a lot of our meetings and was very much appreciated. And tirelessly, Commissioner Gene Simpson from the Planning Commission was also very strong in participating and representing the city.
Thank you.
Now I will open it up to questions.
So who decides if and when this gets on their table, Metro's table, as far as expansion?
Who decides what? I'm sorry?
When it gets on their time schedule or on their radar, so to speak.
So ultimately, again, they'll look at, in three years, they'll look at the urban growth boundary. There's an urban growth report that's generated that basically says, the urban growth report this time had a low, moderate, and high growth rate for the metro area. And they said, well, Portland can accommodate a lot of this because they're planning to go up. They're planning to grow vertically. If they had gone, you know, I mean, sorry, low, if they had gone high, then potentially they would have needed land, and they would have started looking to communities to say, hey, we need some additional land, here's where the jobs are, can we, we need some land, and they'd start that discussion with the communities. So right now, that discussion won't occur again for another, I say three years, but they'll start the urban growth report two years from now.
But they put it on their own radar. It's not like we petitioned to them.
We can.
So Metro is mandated by state law to, same with many jurisdictions, not in the metro area, to have a 20-year land supply for housing and jobs. And so that's why they have to go through this urban growth report and this urban growth management process every six years. And basically, when they go through this process, if they identify a need, that's where we chime in a little bit more and say, hey, what about over here? Or, you know, other jurisdictions will say, we, we need this, this land over here. And so sometimes there's, that's where Metro Council has to make some decisions on where they expand their urban growth boundary if there's, you know, they have to make choices based on where it makes sense to expand the urban growth boundary. We certainly, there are some processes for minor amendments of the urban growth boundary if we, if a jurisdiction wanted it. It's a little bit more challenging of a process, but if there's a specific need, it's more seen for jobs than, than housing.
It's kind of like what we do with the schools over there. That was a minor.
I think that actually came in, I, this, it actually came in before my time, but it was my understanding that it came in through one of their urban growth boundary decisions, but the school district and the city did advocate quite strongly at that time for bringing it in there and then for a school need. But, but I, I'm not positive if, I always assumed that was the process, but I'm not certain that it was.
Schools are a special need criteria that you can appeal.
Right. I think that's the reason why it was approved, so.
Well, thank you so much for all of your work. Thank you to the CAC group. Countless hours, I know how hard Counselor Sally Robinson and Gene Simpson, I know you guys put in a lot of time and this entire group. So I thank you, thank you, thank you for working on the pre-concept plan. I've always been an advocate of pre-concept. This is how you have, as you said, that open and transparent discussion about where we want to go as, as a city and have lots and lots and lots of involvement of our citizens and lots of voices and lots of input. And that's the way we want to talk about growing our city is with everybody on board and involved. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I will open up the public hearing time if I have some public hearing call.
And Mayor and Council, we did lose Counselor Harris at about 7:45.
Okay.
She communicated with City Manager Gall that if she was not needed, she would not continue at this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Brown is still on the line? Okay, all right, thank you. Kurt Christensen? Excuse me.
Kurt Christensen, 22520 Southwest Fair Oaks Court, Sherwood, Oregon 97140. It's probably going to be impossible in four minutes to give a reasonable and rational rebuttal to what took the rest of the group that was just up here a lot more time. So I will say this, if this is the future that you want Sherwood to go to, this is an incredibly competent plan, and it's an awful lot of good work. However, if this is the future that you want Sherwood to look like, it won't be the Sherwood that you know, or we have known, and it won't be the Sherwood that has received all the accolades that we keep saying Sherwood is a wonderful place to live, Sherwood a wonderful place to come to. It won't be that place. It'll be a 50,000-plus metropolis contiguous with Beaverton, looking very much like Beaverton. I commute to Hillsborough and Roy Rogers. You can see Beaverton coming down the road right now. Traffic is already unbearable with Sherwood West. It's going to be dead stop still, just like Twilight and Sherwood is. In terms of cost, I think it's always interesting, I have worked in both private and public spheres, and if I was looking at this as a financial document to find if I could put money into this, I probably wouldn't because it's based on beg, borrow, and steal funding. We will be looking at other people who will be living here at the time when this is done. You'll be looking at 10 school bonds that haven't been paid. The last water master plan that you just passed called for 80% of all the development costs being paid for by current residents. That'll be a huge offset. I have a handout to you that is self-explanatory. If you adopt this, it's going to have a certain amount of legal weight. If you accept it, it's going to have a certain amount of legal weight. My recommendation is that you receive it with no further action required so that the planning department can use it as a guiding instrument, similar to the way the planning department has been able to use the southeast master plan that was never adopted by council either. So I'm asking all of you to be mindful of, is this the future that you want Sherwood to become? Is this where you want your children to live like? As an alternate future, I would encourage you to look at other communities, for example, Corvallis. Corvallis has created a circumference of green belts that have naturally wrapped the city in a protective envelope so that people, they can have an urban environment, but they also are right next to nature. If you remember the map they projected up there, it's very easy for me to see how Brookman could be a natural green belt. And if you look at the features on the west side, where Sherwood West is proposing to build eight houses per acre, the features over there are gorgeous, and there's a natural possibility for continuing that green belt wraparound. So I recommend that you receive the Sherwood Master Plan with no further action required and allow the planning department to use it as an advisory document, similar to the manner it has used the Sherwood Southeast Master Plan.
Thank you. Gene Simpson?
Weird being on the side, isn't it? Gene Simpson, Sherwood, Oregon, Mayor Clark and councilors. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. As a member of the Planning Commission, I was the liaison to the Sherwood West Community Advisory Committee, so I've been involved with the project from the beginning. I want to thank Kirsten and Anise from the Coen Ogans Green Company, Laura Ly from Eco Northwest, and Martin from Sarah Architects for the fabulous effort they put forth in not only creating this plan, but understanding and getting to know the city of Sherwood through the process. And a special thank you to Brad Kilby and the city staff that contacted the affected property owners in the Sherwood West area so they could be part of this process. I want to share with you two of the remarkable takeaways I got out of this process. First, as you know, we have a fabulous wealth of knowledgeable, engaged, and dedicated citizens. As you can see on the acknowledgement page, there are, I counted 18, community members. They volunteered many hours reading packets, attending meetings, and during this very long process, there were few absences. I think we had over 40 applicants for these positions, and several of the people that were not selected still came to the meetings and were engaged in the process. We didn't always have unanimous votes, but we did engage in meaningful discussions and were able to come to a general consensus. In my opinion, all of that input produced a much better final document and a great starting point for future discussions. Secondly, this process helped me to understand what makes Sherwood great. We know about the extraordinary schools, but like most of the 19,000 people that live here now, I moved here because it was a small town. In 1991, when I moved here the first time, there were only 4,000 residents. What I couldn't put my finger on was why, 25 years later, we still feel like a small town. Based on what I learned through this process, it seems like we can attribute a lot of that feeling to two simple but very valuable characteristics, small, walkable neighborhoods, and the protection of the natural areas. This plan not only describes how these characteristics shape Sherwood, but are key to the actual designs you see in options one and options two. Small, walkable neighborhoods and the protection of the natural areas are incorporated in these options and can allow Sherwood to grow without losing what we value. Thinking about 1,291 acres coming into Sherwood is scary. Not planning for this area is terrifying. The natural buffers we have between other cities and even within our own neighborhoods set Sherwood apart from the rest of the contiguous metro area. As a community, we need to protect what we value, and we need to control how our city will grow. Adopting this plan will give directions to future councils and planners, especially as we start our comprehensive plan update. Therefore, I encourage you to approve this resolution and accept the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
And if you have any questions about the process and the amazing people that were involved, I can write a goodwill letter about it. It was absolutely fabulous. And just on a personal note, Martin is not here this evening, and I've worked with lots of consultants and lots of different plans through the years. And when you tell a consultant from outside the area, Sherwood's great, they go, yes, okay, whatever. But when he came back to the next meeting and eyes were lit up and he had taken the time to learn what made Sherwood great, and when he incorporated the topography of what made us special and a gem within the metro area, I knew he got it. And it, I think it was, it was fabulous for me to see that in the process and how that worked out. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Ida Wilkes? Ida Wilks?
I'm Ida Wilks. I live at 20812 Southwest Elbert Road.
Rockstar.
Okay, now, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have the high piece of ground at the crossroads of Edie and Elbert. I've lived there 54 years, raised five children. We had horses, herds, sheep. I thought I had to climb the tree to pick the walnuts and fellrets until Le Bon and some of my neighbors helped me out. But it's been a wonderful place to raise a family, and I love being on this committee because they're planning for other families. And we need the, we need sidewalks, we need the back bike paths. I mean, it's a thing of the times, and safety's important. I won't be here to see the program end. I'm 85 years old, and 50 years from now, I don't even want to be here, but I've appreciated the opportunity to do it. And I have a wonderful neighbor, little Le Bon, who moves my lawn and does all sorts of things to keep me there. So, as long as Lowell and I work together, we're in good shape. Thanks.
Thank you, Ida. Kennedy Hawkins?
Kennedy Hawkins, 19395 Southwest Hayden Road in Sherwood. And I was a member of the Community Advisory Committee, and one of the reasons why I wanted to be involved in this committee was, I think, one of the reasons, well, several reasons why we live in Sherwood is because of its livability, because of its small-town feel, and also because it's a great place to raise a family. And that's why I've lived here for the past 19 years. And I would strongly encourage you to adopt this plan for a couple of reasons. I think what this plan does is it melds those reasons why we love to call Sherwood our home. And what you see in the plan is it provides a way to expand through residential development, but yet keeps those things that we hold dear here in Sherwood, like parks and the ecosystem, the, the small community feel that we have. And then I would just like to just briefly talk about the process because I've been involved in several of these kind of processes over the years, and I've been impressed with, I would say, just the excellence of the people involved in this process. It's, it's impressive. And then, too, one of the things that really stood out to me was the level of transparency. And people talk a lot about transparency. That's kind of a buzzword in our culture today, but I really saw that in the process. And here's why, is because the, the plans that we started with is, the plan, the final plan is very different than what we started with, and, and people gave feedback in multiple venues, and it was listened to, and Martin and his team made those changes. So, I was glad to be a part of this project, and my recommendation to you would, hopefully that you would, after careful consideration, adopt this plan.
Thank you. Eugene Stewart?
Eugene Stewart, I'm a property owner in Sherwood, downtown Sherwood, across the street here. One of the things that, it sounds like, you know, a great plan, a lot of thought went into it, but one of the things that seems to be missing is the transportation element. And the reason I say that is that, okay, are we looking at, just roughly, if you add 10,000 people, 5,000 more cars up on that hill? And where are they going to go? They're going to come down to 99W. 99W cannot handle it now. You're going to have to put some major intersections in so that people can get across at each end, and maybe even you need to be looking at a major interchange at each end because every time you put stoplights in, you slow down the traffic flowing down 99W. So, either you got to take your head out of the sand and start looking at, how do you get the people to go through smoothly or around Sherwood? And as you develop plan, if you cut off or you can put bypasses or incorporate them in, it's just going to make it worse. Right now, today, the traffic was backed up from Meinike back to Sunset. Solid, stop and go. That's because traffic going to the high school. How do you improve that? Also, I've heard that Washington County is putting a roundabout on Elbert and Scholl Sherwood Road. So, what is their thought? Also, I know it's quite evident they're going to make Roy Rogers five lanes. All that traffic coming down towards that area, if they can't get into six corners, they're going to go over and go down Elbert and make that worse. We need to plan for it ahead of time, not wait till it's a mess. Also, I've also heard that Washington County is talking about five lanes down Elbert. I'm sure that with what they're developing, what they're looking at, they are probably looking at a five-lane road some way that goes over to, to 99W. But I just don't see, on the other end, traffic gets backed up in the evenings, all the way sometimes, and the bad times, all the way back to the auto wrecking yard. Is that what we want? Does that make it livable? People are cutting through even downtown Sherwood to bypass six corners. So, we're not looking at all the problems we have with traffic and trying to come up with a solution that will help solve it. I don't think we need to be like Dundee and Newburgh and wait for 40 years to finally get something that may not even work after they get done. So, I think you need to, maybe, like Kurt said, just don't accept it, take it on as, and let's look at it a little bit closer, and let's really look at the traffic because you can't bury your heads in the sands because it's not, you know. And the other thing is, the Department of Transportation, two months ago, spokesman said the highway, all the state highways in the Portland metropolitan area exceed capacity. And their suggestion was bicycle or take the bus. It ain't going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Tony Bevel?
Good evening. Tony Bevel, Southwest Lindley, Sherwood, living here 17 years. I was given the privilege of being on the committee. One thing we weren't given was a crystal ball to look 20 years, 50 years down the line. I, you know, I'm joking there, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's quite a task to look 50 years down the line what Sherwood's going to be like. Just moments ago, Jean and Kurt, Jean talking about traffic, yeah, that is an issue, but what this pre-concept plan is, it's a blueprint. I mean, blueprints are worked on. I mean, I envision this thing being changed 100 times, an exaggeration. It's going to be changed numerous times. I mean, everything that is on those alternatives, it's not written in stone. I think we're given the opportunity now to work on this thing 10 years. So, I think that we can get it right. This was an attempt by citizens, is an attempt by citizens and professionals to give the best ideas, best thoughts, and, you know, put them down, hand you something that you can look at, accept it or not accept it. I think it's an honest attempt to provide a blueprint for the city, and I think you should accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Did I have any additional? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll return it to staff. Staff, did you?
So, I would just, I don't have a lot to respond other than to traffic. We gave quite a bit of consideration to traffic and traffic alternatives in that area. In fact, I would say that in our first meeting, that was probably the predominant discussion topic with traffic. And listen, I always tell people, we can do everything that everybody wants to do with traffic. You widen every road to six lanes, but there are still people from Beaverton that want to get through Sherwood. There are still people from Newburgh that want to get through Sherwood. There are still people from Tigard and Tuolton and those places. We are always going to have traffic issues in Sherwood. You can build capacity, but once the capacity is there, you're going to get, it's going to fill up. They're not going to stop growing, and if we, if we're not, we're not keeping our options open by saying that we're going to shut ourselves down. We need more alternatives for traffic, but this is a start. We have to have that discussion, and we're not going to be able to solve the regional traffic issues. But there are efforts going on out there that are looking to those regional traffic issues. The Washington County Future Study Metro has just kicked off their regional transportation plan. So, you know, there will be opportunities to identify where the shortfalls are and what investments need to be made to help start addressing the traffic congestion in the area. Overall, you know, Sherwood right now may not have enough density to support transit alternatives, but over time, with more people coming into Sherwood, transit might be an option that we would want to explore more seriously and consider. So, I would say that to Kurt and Jean's point, we've considered traffic carefully through this process, and again, this doesn't, this does not keep you down to any single policy or make any decisions for you on traffic. And it's certainly nowhere within the plan do we prescribe eight units to the acre. That's just where the city's at today.
Thank you. Well, I, thank you, staff. Do you have any questions for staff? Okay, I'll return it to council. I, for one, am so proud of this process. I'm so proud of how many citizens we got involved, how much we reached out and brought new people in, and it, it just, I, I think that the whole process, the way that your group came together, 19 individuals, and talked through the process, and worked through the process, and changed it, and moved it, that, that's community. That's building a community together, and that's the kind of thing that I want to see happening in Sherwood. I, I loved the public comment about, as, as I, I think that Jean talked about this, that as, as we looked at Sherwood and said, "What makes Sherwood Sherwood?" We want more of that. That's what we want more of, and that's definitely the reason that we live here. We live here with intention, and so we, we want those open green spaces. We want those community neighborhoods and walkability, and, and I appreciate all of the work of these great volunteer citizens and the commitment that they gave to this process. And, and let's remember what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about, as the resolution states, the Sherwood West preliminary concept plan. The reason I love that so much is we're ahead the ball here. We're not waiting for Metro to decide for us. We're saying, "We want to talk about our community. We want to define our community." We're not going to let somebody else make the decision for us. And I love the way that you put that. We're going to have a say in it, and we're going to continue to have a say in it because this is a preliminary concept, and it's not a final draft, and we're going to talk about transportation, and I think it's great that Jean Stewart brought that up. We're going to talk about how we want our community to continue to be this great community that we chose to live in. So, thank you very much for that. So, I'm very much in support of this resolution and the hard work that the citizens have put into this. Counsel?
Yeah. Okay, so this document, I am so looking forward to reading this document. I will read this document tonight and throughout the weekend. I'm so excited to look at this and see everything that's in here. I have participated in public involvement off and on as part of what I do for a living, and I'm very excited to see how much public involvement there was through this entire process. I did not go to a single meeting. I purposely stayed away. This is what I get to look at with fresh eyes. I don't, I, this, this is it. So, I'm very excited about that. And one of the things that I really liked about, and I wish I could meet Martin, I hope that I do get to meet him in the future, but I think when people talk about what it means to live in a place, you know, what makes Sherwood great, one of the maps that was put up that showed the Tuolton River to the north, the Tonkin Scablands on one side, Parrot Mountain on one side, and Chehalum, you're really talking about a sense of place. And when people come to Sherwood, I know when I came here, I was always wondering, "Why, I was drawn here. Why am I here? I'm here for something. I know I'm supposed to be here," and that was almost 17, 18 years ago. And everyone I talked to feels the same way. And I really believe that landscape and where you are on the landscape and what surrounds you gives you that foundation for a sense of place, and from that, you get your community, you get your walkability, you get your green spaces. And so, to see what was done through that process and, and groups of people coming together and moving through that process is very exciting. And I do appreciate Jean and Kurt's mention about traffic. I noticed on one of the pages here that there was quite an extensive collaboration between what, what was going on here in Washington County, which is great, and because this document is preliminary, that means it's dynamic, and it will continue to be dynamic. And I'm assuming that there'll be a lot of, you know, continued discussion on that. I do have one quick question. I know that CET means construction excise tax, but what is a CET grant? And was that what was used to come up with this, the funding for this?
Yeah, it's, it's metros. They actually have renamed it the Community Development Planning Grant, but basically, with new development, all developers pay a construction excise tax to Metro. There's also one for the school district that helps fund new capacity. And then, communities throughout the metro area apply to Metro competitively for funding through that CET fund. One of the main purposes of that is to plan for new urban areas, and so, there's sort of two pots. There's one inside, inside urban areas, and then one for planning for things like Brookman, Area 59, Sherwood West.
All right, great. Thank you. Counselor?
I have a comment. I would just like to thank the members of the, I don't know, it's called the CAC, which is the Community Advisory Committee, and then there was also a TAC Committee, which is the Technical Advisory Committee, which is a combination of staff from Sherwood, Clean Water Services, the Refuge, Fire Department, Metro, TVFNR, and ODOT. And, and that in itself is, is an accomplishment to get that many people from that many agencies in a room to, to try to figure out the best thing that's going to work with that land for Sherwood. And so, I want to compliment staff and the members of the committee for what was a very long process for which you received, you know, no real compensation other than our gratitude and, and hopefully, an appreciation for the process. I, I totally agree with Mr. Hawkins in that the reason that people come to Sherwood, there, there's a feeling that you get when you come to Sherwood, the same feeling I get when I fly in from, from California. And it's green, and it's protected, and it's planned, and I think that, that Counselor Kuiper and I, who have both lived here about the same time, about 18 years, when we moved here, there were about 8,000 people living here. And that is, that is something that has been intentionally planned for and done for the whole time that we've lived here. I think we just do a better job of involvement and taking input, and I think there are multiple avenues by which we reach out to people and not just, you know, placing an ad in, in the paper that's not even delivered here, which is what we have done in the past. And so, as we continue to improve on our processes, it should only be likely that the citizens feel like they're getting a better product when they're asked for their input. And I think that, that all the compliments that staff received tonight is a function of having a plan and working the plan, and working smarter and not just harder. And as Mr. Bevel said, you know, this is, this is a concept, but you have to start somewhere. And, you know, we've had some disagreements in the past with Metro about what we thought was best for Sherwood, and Metro had, you know, their was best for Sherwood, and Metro had, you know, their opinion of what was best for Sherwood, and sometimes we met in the middle and sometimes we didn't. But by having the plan in place, we control a portion of our destiny, and when Metro, in the period, the time that Brad talked about, when they review the urban growth boundary or begin that process, we'll have a footprint that we feel is a, I guess, a hybrid of staff, technical, and input from the community, and I couldn't ask for a better product. And I'm looking forward, you know, to the next time we have the opportunity to review this. It's going to be years down the road, but I'm pretty sure that we set the bar pretty high, and that other communities would look to us and say, you know, that's a process that is transparent and is lasting. It's not something that we'll just put on a shelf and review in 10 years. So I'm, of course, in favor of moving forward, realizing that this is not a static document, that it will change many times, but that I think this is a very good foundation from which to grow Sherwood West on.
So on that, I move, we... Oh, Counsel Brousse, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did everything that everybody's already said, and thank you to the group who put all the time and effort into coming up with this plan. And Counsel Kuiper, you will enjoy reading the documents, fascinating reading on the flight out here to Dallas, but I would wholeheartedly support the concept, and knowing that it is a concept and that it could change and fluctuate. So, thank you.
All right. So I move, we read caption and adopt Resolution 2016-009, accepting the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan as a foundational tool on which to base future urban growth, boundary expansion discussions, and future refinement plans.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Senior Manager?
Thank you so much. And consultant team. Thank you to everybody!
So Mayor and Counsel, in the spirit of time, we still have a work session after this meeting. I don't have anything to present tonight unless you have questions for me or the directors that are here. Any questions on anything? Okay.
No, thank you. Okay, council announcements. So I will, according to time, make it a little brief. As we talked about a little bit, we, several of our counselors, Counsel Kuiper, Counsel President Harris, Counsel Brousse, and myself, all attended the Smart Growth Conference to kind of talk about this very thing. And I am very thankful to Chair Jean Simpson, who also took time off of work to attend this conference. And that is a dedication that I very much appreciate, and I think she really liked it. And I think she came away invigorated, which is what it's all about, and I was very thrilled that it was here in Portland this year, so that it was very cost-effective for the city to get to send Chair Simpson and also, well, our staff, as well as Planning Commissioner Alan Pearson. So I'm very excited to receive a lot of information that we're going to be sharing in work sessions together, and we want to definitely hear your input. But I want to thank Jean Simpson's dedication, kind of going above and beyond to take time off work to go to the conference to serve the city of Sherwood. So thank you very much, Jean. I really appreciate it. And that's it for now. I'm going to cut it short.
Okay, I will, too. Just want to thank the people who put on the police dinner and the YMCA auction. It was very successful, and I'm sure in the future, we'll have more successful ones, too. So, thank you very much.
Just one announcement for students that are out listening, if any students are listening to this, I don't know. The library is having an open mic at 7:00 PM this Sunday, and they had a previous open mic, and it was really successful, and a lot of kids came out to participate, and I think it's hopefully going to get some traction. So I just wanted to shout that out to our high schoolers and middle schoolers to come out to the open mic on Sunday at 7:00. The library.
Thank you. Counsel Harrison?
Mr. Garland already talked about the puzzle tournament that's up and coming. I'd like to thank the Police Department for the third year of allowing us to have it in that room. It works great. Everybody knows where the Police Department is, and there's adequate parking, and the room is awesome. I'm just checking my calendar to see. We have a police advisory board meeting this Thursday at the PD, 7 o'clock, if anybody's interested in attending that. And as Counsel King said, we were privileged to attend the annual Police Awards Banquet, which is a dinner that is sponsored by the Sherwood Police Foundation, so I'd like to thank them for continuing to do that. And it was very enjoyable to hear about the chief's year in review and the officers. And I think that's it for me, other than the puzzle tournament this Saturday.
Counsel Brousse?
Just a couple of updates on the different committees that I'm a liaison for. I attended the Water Consortium, and then on the mayor's behalf, the WRWC committee meeting, and both meetings were basically going over the budget for the coming year. And also attended the school board meeting, and they're working on curriculum adoption, and they continued the discussion in regards to a possible bond, and that's all I have.
Thank you. We will adjourn back to our work session.